Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, everyone. It is 7:30, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation by Pastor Jan Eckstedt, First Christian Church. Jan?
Let us bow in prayer. Lord, we give you thanks for this opportunity to meet together tonight in freedom and make decisions on behalf of this community. We ask for your blessing of our mayor this evening. We ask for your blessing of our council members, of our police and fire and detention personnel, as well as administrative staff. We pray for blessing, Lord, and pray that this council will make decisions that will honor you and this country. And again, thank you, Lord, for the gift of your Son Christ Jesus, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. (inaudible) of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wrong call.
Here.
Prayer.
Here.
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 Here. Okay, if you'd be so kind, if you don't have a copy of the agenda, there should be some back here in this corner. Is there any left back there?
Zero left.
Zero left?
Yes.
Does anybody want a copy? Maybe we might have to share, I guess, so. Anyway, for those that have a copy, if I could draw your attention to the top portion where it says "Meeting Procedure." The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please state your name and address, and limit remarks to three minutes or less. Out of respect to city employees, we request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor, and an individual in violation will be declared out of order. A current copy of Open Meetings Act of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. We'll begin with a consent agenda. All matters under consent agenda are considered by the city council by routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. So item number one is approved minutes of September 18th, 2018. Item number two is place on file ML&amp;W reports from August 2018. Item number three, place on file treasurer's report for August 2018. Number four is approved mayor's reappointments of Robert Barnhouse, Connie Hibner, and Elise Bowling to the Library Advisory Board. Item number five, approved mayor's reappointment of Tia McGuire and Lena Askig to the City Tree Board. Item number six, sent application to Bottle Shop of Norplat LSC for a Class D liquor license. That's beer, wine, and distilled spirits off sale only, located at 514 South Jeffreys Street to the Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. And item number seven, approve application by Powell's Brewery Company LLC for a special designated license on November 10th, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at the DNN Event Center, 501 East Walker Road for a cornhole tournament sponsored by the Lincoln County Visitors Bureau. And item number eight, adopt recommendation by the Norplat Planning Commission for a preliminary and final approval of Hendrickson's Third Replat.
Move that we approve items one through eight.
Second.
All right, regular agenda. Item number nine is a public hearing and action regarding amendment to the master plan for 1802 North Sheridan Avenue on property described as Lot 7 Obermeyer's Replat, Norplat, Lincoln And this is a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak on this matter.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Public hearing's been closed.
Move that we adopt the rec-- that we approve the amendment to the master plan for 1802 North Sheridan Avenue on property described as Lot 7 Obermeyer's Replat, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for you, real quick, Nancy. Sorry. So when I was looking at your plat, and what you guys were looking at doing, there's a house that sits on the north side of the lot, and it doesn't look like it has much access. Is that... Can you explain that to me? Because I'm feeling like you have a few lots where they're going to have a few car stalls, where they're doubled up, and then they're going to have to walk across a bunch of grass and like look in someone... Their front door is like facing their neighbor's back door. Or something like, you know, you know what I mean? Like the way the lots configured, if someone's to build a house right there, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I know, I understand what you mean. And yeah, what we were doing with that, honestly, is look, we were working with Incremental Design Alliance, and they were critiquing it, and they said that there was a way that we can get yet another duplex there. If you've been up to the site, you know what the land looks like up there. And we've, we honestly have been talking to the owner, and so at some point in time we would love to be able to buy that. So the idea is that that would continue. We would come back with another master plan, that sort of thing.
And that alley access is gravel? Or concrete, or what are we doing?
Not yet, but it's been planted, so we'll end up getting it opened up in conjunction with--
But it's going to be gravel, and then you're going to have a concrete lot? Two lots for them? Is that what it is?
We're going concrete partway up, aren't we, Jim?
Right, we'll put the approach in and whatever, and so it'll be partly concrete, but the majority of it will be gravel. The other thing is, is it might answer your question on the north end, there is part of a dedicated right-of-way in there, too, that's never been opened.
That's true.
Okay, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Item number 10, public hearing to consider Community Development Block Grant Program, CDVG, 2018 Owner Occupied Rehab Program, application for a CDVG eligible housing projects in Norplat, and approved resolution authorizing submission of the application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, DED. And this is a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Close?
Move that we approve the Community Development Block Grant Program, 2018 Owner Occupied Rehab Program, application for CDVG eligible housing projects in Norplat, and approved resolution authorizing submission of the application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development.
Second.
Abstain. And that motion passes, 7-0 with one abstention. Okay, item number 11, third reading and action to adopt ordinance number 3999 to rezon certain lands from R1 Dwelling District to an R2 Dwelling District located at 3601 West Philip Avenue and 802 through 820 Dixie Avenue. The property is described as Gosnell Estates First Replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
An ordinance of the City of Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning lands situated in Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska as follows. Res zoning from R1 Dwelling District to R2 Dwelling District, Gosnell Estates First Replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Repel all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict you're with, providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 3999 to rezone certain lands from an R1 Dwelling District to an R2 Dwelling District located at 3601 West Philip Avenue and 802 to 820 Dixie Avenue. The property is described as Gosnell Estates First Replat of Block 3, Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Second.
Yes.
So I just wanted to say something, and I just want to try to explain the reason why I really support this project, and so that way, hopefully, the people that can't be here, who have been here at those meetings, I don't think I've done a really good job at trying to explain that. And so I just wanted to try to give my explanation real quick, and hopefully the media can pick it up and get it to those people who aren't here tonight. You know, when I was, first got on to the council, I had somebody that I knew that had been in politics before, and he told me, one of the things is, you want to be able to, always be able to explain why you did and what you did, and be right with what you did. And so, one of the reasons that I really support this project is because I said that I really wanted to try to improve Norplat and help it grow. And I wanted to try to make sure that Norplat had more options. People said that they wanted, you know, more retail options, they wanted more restaurant options to be able to eat at and shop at, they wanted more things that they could do entertainment-wise. And so, it's unfortunately, city council doesn't get to pick à la carte on that and say, "We would like this and that to come here," and it doesn't work that way. But what we have to do is foster an environment that precipitates those kind of things wanting to come here or be created by people locally here. And so, early on in the council years here, we found out that there were some problems with trying to help our current businesses grow, as well as recruit new businesses. One of those was housing. People, they said that even though we want to recruit some people here, they can't afford to move here because either the houses are too high, or the houses weren't in the market that they were looking for. We've had numerous studies that have said that, and we have another one out there that says that we have a housing shortage, no different than Columbus, no different than Norfolk, nor different than Scotts Bluff, or anyone else in our city of classes, or class city around the state. We all have this problem. The problem is, it's just too expensive to build here in Norplat and across the state, unless you live in a major city with enough contractors and supplies to be able to drive down that cost. You know, another thing that comes into the problem is quality of life, and another thing is, we need more jobs, and that means high-paying jobs, and even, you know, people that can work those low entry-level jobs as well in Norplat. Right now, the minimum wage, when I drive around looking around, you see Kadoba hiring at 11 bucks or more an hour, Raising Cane's hiring 11 bucks an hour, Hardy's signed up there saying 13 bucks an hour. Banks are hiring at 12, 13, 14 bucks an hour, and 15, 15 bucks an hour, he says, so he's confirmed it. So it's, those are entry-level jobs that we have to pay a lot of money, you know, in order with them. They're well above minimum wage, and that's fine, but that also reciprocates the problem that we don't have entry-level workforce. We don't have enough professional-level workforce, we don't have enough workforce in general. We need to keep expanding that, so that way our current employers can keep expanding their businesses, so that way we can say we have enough people that if you want to move a major corp, a major business here with 50 jobs, that we can help you out, and we can make sure that you will have enough employees to work your business for you. So in order to be able to do that, you know, this is just, I talked to one business owner today, and he told me, you know, it's backwards if we think that we can get those employers and those entertainment options and those things that come to town without first building the houses and trying to get some people and some bodies in Norplat to be able to fill those. And that's why I concur with what he said, and so, that's why I think that a housing project like this is a small, it's a small drop in the bucket overall, but it creates a good positive image. The Norplat is willing to do the steps that are necessary in order to get these houses built, to get employees to come here, so that way our, our businesses we currently have, and the businesses that are looking at coming to Norplat, and the businesses that aren't even aware that they're going to be looking at Norplat in five years, can say that we're making the right steps, and that we're willing to do what it takes in order to make sure that they're going to be successful here in Norplat. So that's the reason why I support this project. I want more housing projects, I want more businesses, I want more entertainment options, just like everybody else, and this is just one small micro step on the way there. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
I wasn't even going to, I wasn't even going to say anything about this tonight. I was just going to vote. We talked a lot about this. But since Andrew felt like he wanted to explain himself, then I'll explain myself. DEFCO and our planning commission routinely does wonderful things for our community, and I applaud that. I just don't think this is one of them. I think, I wish our planning commission would spend a little more time thinking about, in terms of orderly growth, and maybe a little less time helping DEFCO put 37 houses 10 feet apart on West Philip. I just think there's a better place that this could be, be happening. I was just jamming too much into a small space, and that's all I have to say.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, motion, yes, sir.
Andrew and Glenn.
Okay, item number 12, third reading and action to adopt ordinance number 4000 to adopt recommendation by the Norplat Planning Commission regarding the vacating Gosnell Estates First Replat, Block 3 Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Move that we--
An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, vacating an existing subdivision plat, creating Gosnell Estates First Replat of Block 3 Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and the publication thereof.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 4000 to rec, to adopt recommendation by the Norplat Planning Commission regarding vacating Gosnell Estates First Replat of Block 3 Gosnell Estates First Subdivision, Norplat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Where are we? Item number 13, public hearing and action to adopt resolution approving the city of Norplat's redevelopment plan for the Dixie Development Housing Project, approving redevelopment This is a public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak? Oh, here we go.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Mike Bacon. I'm an attorney from Gothenburg. I am special counsel to the Community Redevelopment Authority, and my purpose here tonight is to explain to you the proposed redevelopment plan and your options in adopting or disapproving of that. The redevelopment plan as filed provides for a 41 lot residence and otherwise complies with the state statutes. You have received recommendations of two public bodies, one being the Planning Commission and one being the Community Redevelopment Authority. Both of those have made specific recommendations with regard to this plan. Both of those have requested that the subdivision be downsized from 41 to 37. The recommendations are forwarded to you, however, the plan that is presented to you is for 41. At the, at the meeting of the Community Redevelopment Authority, I was directed to prepare a redevelopment contract should this council approve the plan that would require, amend your approved plan to reduce the number of lots to 37, to require a minimum square footage of 1,200 square feet for each one of the houses built there, to require sidewalks be placed, and that a fence be placed along Philip Street. So the process, as it goes forward, would be, the plan is presented to you for 41. If we go back and amend that plan, we start over and put the process probably back 45 days and go through the same hearings that you've already gone through. The Community Redevelopment Authority has the ability, should you approve this plan, to make minor amendments, and that would be adjusting the lots down from 41 to 37. So you have the following options. You can take no action, in which case the project will fail. You can vote against approving the project, and the project would fail. You can vote for the project, at which time it would go back to the Community Redevelopment Authority, and they've directed me to have the documents there that downsize it in accordance with the wishes of both themselves, the Redevelopment Authority and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The plan is a standard plan. It would provide for capturing, over time, $1,688,000. Those funds would be used to purchase the property and install all of the public infrastructure. If you divide that amount of money by the 37 lots, it comes out approximately $45,500 or $600, and if he sold all of the lots on day one, he would make no profit. If you put in a 10% return, the lot prices would easily escalate over $50,000 a lot. The holding costs, if no lots are sold at a 6% loan, plus taxes on those lots, would approach approximately $150,000 a year. So this plan proposes that the redeevelper and others, because his stated intent is to sell some of the lots so other people can build houses. So he is asking that you approve the plan allowing for this to be a phased construction over the next three to seven years. The taxes diverted would be approximately $4,500 per house that would not go to the school districts, would not go to the city, would not go to any of the supporting tax entities for the 15-year period. There would, however, be sales tax that would be available to the city based on the material sales that are incorporated into the house. At one of the public hearings, we had represented the superintendent from the schools indicating they are in support and have capacity for the students. The cost-benefit analysis that is in place looks at the tax effects of this project. One of those impacts is what happens to the schools, so they would have a higher student loan. It would come in over the period of build-out, and at about .35 students per household, you'd get less than 20 students as a result of this project. We believe your police department and fire department have sufficient resources to handle this development. We see no other impacts, negative or positive, to the community. This would require the rezoning that you have passed, it would require a subdivision or re-subdivision, and further action by the council. My job here is not to be a proponent, but to answer your questions. I am neutral in my position, I just am the attorney for the Community Redevelopment Authority, but be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, sir. So you put this whole little item here together, correct? You wrote all this out?
Yes, sir.
And item number A, under general prediction, or general project description, it states that this will be done in annual phases in the years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, with extension for three years, which pushes it out to 2024. In Exhibit A, you have it to 2022, adding three years, which is 2025. Which one is it?
Gotcha.
Because, I mean, that's--
The tat, this is, on Exhibit A is the build, and the taxes come out a year later, so that's, that's why those, those taxes are captured a year later.
I understand that, but it says right here, enter item A, after infrastructure installation, housing units will be constructed in annual phases in the years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. In Exhibit A, you've included it at 2022. So I'm just trying to figure out which one it is, because if he has to 2024 or 2025 to build these 37 homes, everybody's up here screaming, "We're having a housing shortage," and he's going to take seven years, averaging five homes a year?
Correct.
I just want to know which one it is.
The, if you take a look at the rest of the description in Exhibit A, it talks about the additional three years after that period of time to do that build-out, so--
Yes.
That's--
So that would put it to 2024, or if you go off Exhibit A, 2025. I just want to know which year, I mean, when is this project going to be completed?
That is entirely dependent on the market demand and build-out.
Okay.
He's going to, as I understand it, has contacted two other builders to buy some of the lots, so it's, it's not going to be one man holding on to that, it's going to be, how many will the market absorb? So it's going to be a phased, phased build-out, and it's theoretically possible that they could do it in one or two years.
Okay.
Starting this year, they don't have infrastructure in or develop that process, so--
Okay. Also, under that same item number, or item letter, the very first line is, "Redevelop will install infrastructure, paving, water, sewer, stormwater mains for redevelopment of a 41-resident subdivision."
Correct.
Exhibit B is a plan for a 37-unit subdivision. I mean, so it is the 37, correct? I mean, you explained that you're going to rewrite this, so why did this not get changed prior to us coming in, just that one word, make it a 37, so we're actually passing, we're voting on a 37-home plan, not a 41?
It's not the one that I sent in, so I don't, I don't know which one got attached to your copy, but it was 41 when it was sent in.
No, because I just sat there and counted them like three times to make sure my math wasn't completely bad, I mean--
It's not what I sent in.
So--
That one, that 37 was not available when I prepared that plan, so that, that was switched during discussion.
And all of this is consideration on the fact that he gets $1.7 million in tax and TIF grant, correct?
Correct.
If he does not get the $1.7 million, how much is he willing to put out of his own pocket to help get this going?
He has to, he has to, out of his own pocket, put all of the infrastructure costs up. The only way he gets his money back is if all of the houses are built, and tax drives that. So he is at risk for the $1,688,000, plus, in addition to the cost of building any houses that he undertakes to do that. So this is all on him, day one. He does have the ability to get that money recouped over the 15-year period for each house, so it's all out of his pocket.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Let me add just a couple things to Mike's presentation. I'm Mike Jacobson, 3020 West Leota Street. I'm the chairman of the Community Redevelopment Authority, and I think, Brooke, those are excellent questions, and I think it deserves really kind of a little broader explanation of what's been agreed to. I think the plan was brought forward on a 41-lot subdivision, and, and it was through the Planning Commission where the recommendations were made, largely as, as listening to the citizens in the area and trying to adapt this project to something that would be more, something that they would find more beneficial and that they could live with. So those recommendations came to the CRA, so we looked that over, and although we can't change what the plan was, we can lay out some stipulations as to what we would approve, assuming that you approve this plan tonight. And our stipulations are all of the things that were recommended as modifications by the, the Planning Commission that came through the local citizens and residents in the area who raised issues. So we have committed that if you approve this plan tonight for a 41-unit subdivision, that we will require, as the plan was modified, and Mike is, is modifying the plan, and I think that's where the confusion came in, because the modified plan that he's going to bring to us, it got attached to this thing tonight, it should have been the original 41 units. When it comes to us, it will be the 37-unit plan, as we directed him to do, and it will-- And it will require the fences, it will require the sidewalks, it will require the lower density, or the, you know, the lower density. So that's the only way that the CRA will approve this, once you have approved the, the project itself, so.
So what's the stop, other than just a change of mind of, if we approve this forty-one lot plan, when it goes to you? You approve a forty-one lot plan, other than just changing your mind?
Well, my mind doesn't get changed real easily, so I will tell you that I can guarantee you it's not going to get passed without it. These changes will occur.
Okay.
These changes will occur. And, and as Mr. Bacon has pointed out, he could have changed ahead of time, but we could have, we could have delayed this by making the plan, the, the general change. But by handling it this way, we can keep this project on, on track, and still accommodate the wishes of the planning commission and each of you looking at that, that lower density. So, so those, those changes will occur. I also just want to, I feel like I always need to give a little bit of a TIF, TIF presentation when we have these conversations. One of the things, and Brooke, I think you also raise a good question on, why is it going to take so long to build it out? It's a function of demand, and we've talked about, well, gosh, I thought there was a housing shortage. There is. There is a housing shortage. The problem is, is that not everyone is going to live in, want to live in the same price of house, same kind of house, in the same general location. But they will, over time, as the, as the, as the demand for that particular location occurs. There will be other houses that will also, and other locations that will also be looked at. As an example, in over an Iron Eagle subdivision, there were new houses, single-family residents that were built there. They all sold, they all sold within six months of being completed. All the duplexes have also sold over an Iron Eagle. So there are some vacant lots there, but most of the people that wanted to live in that area have bought those houses. There have been a couple of other houses built since. But we've got to look at, at where the general locations are, what people want to be close to. This development's going to be closer to the, to the hospital, further away from the interstate, which some people would prefer. So, from Lonnie's standpoint, the builder, he's going to go in and up in front with his funds about north of a million seven in infrastructure costs. And he's going to have that money sunk into the project. And when he gives, and after he's spent the money on that project, he will come to the CRA, prove up that he spent that, at least that amount of money on the approved expenses that qualify for TIF. And then he will, and this is where you got to listen carefully, he will write us a check for the amount of the TIF bond, a million six eighty-eight, thereabouts. We'll write him a check back for a million six eighty-eight, thereabouts. So we, the CRA slash city, are out nothing. We will also give him a piece of paper called the bond. And that bond is going to give him the rights to collect the incremental increases in tax valuation on that property, resulting from the improvements to that property. The faster he builds houses, the faster he's going to be able to get the increment raised and start collecting his million, roughly million seven back. It's on him to build it out. The alternative, of course, could be that the city go in and put in the infrastructure at the city's cost, do it as an, as a connection district, or as an extension, and then all the taxpayers are out the money. And if it doesn't develop, all of us, the rest of us, pay for it.
And we've done that before, and the land actually just sold recently at auction last year, or a year and a half ago.
Actually, that's a, not totally the case, it's, that was not intended to have worked out that way.
It wasn't intended to work that way, that's the way it worked out, and it went to auction, and now we're, housing shortage, and we have something subdivided with infrastructure there, no houses being built.
Although the infrastructure is not properly installed, and it's not a really attractive place to locate, I would, would submit that as well, because it still lacks the internal infrastructure. This, this particular property, people look at it and say, where's, the infrastructure's there. Well, no, it's not. You've got city streets that's around it, but when we talk about infrastructure.
Yeah, there's a sewer.
You've got to go in, you've got to put in streets, you've got to put in sewer, you've got to put in water, you've got to put in electrical. That's where the cost comes from, that's what Mr. Bacon had pointed out. You've got about fifty thousand dollars per lot to do that. And so when you add that on top of the cost to build the house, you've made the home unaffordable. That's why we're not getting new houses built, because you can't afford to go out today with the cost of construction, buy raw land, put in all the public infrastructure, and sell the houses and make any money. In fact, even get your money back. In fact, I'll submit that the developer who built the homes out at Iron Eagle didn't make any money. Didn't make any money. And he bought the houses cheap, or he bought the lots cheap, he got shot in the arm money, but he still didn't make any money. So time is of the essence on these building projects. If you go in and do a project of this size, you've got to run to get your money back. And that's why, in this case, the developer's going to invite other builders to come in and take advantage of the lots in that area to build homes in that price range, in that general location. Once the TIF begins to run, on the first houses that, that get built, you've got fifteen years to capture it, and then, and then you can't capture anymore whether the bond gets paid off or not. So by staging this, as Mike indicated, you're going to build the first year, or we're going to use assessed value as January one of that year. So it's January one of the next year is when you're going to assess it with the increase in value. And then that's the year's taxes, which are a year in arrears, that he's going to start getting, collecting TIF payments on. He's got fifteen years from that date, whether the bond's paid off or not, he no longer has the rights to the incremental increase. Everything at that point goes to the tax rolls. And so by staging this out, we're giving him an opportunity to fully absorb that subdivision over, in phases, which gives him a little more time to capture the TIF on the back end. But it's in his best interest to get it, get the houses sold as quickly as he can, get the lots sold as quickly as he can, so he can recoup the cost of, of the infrastructure.
I understand that.
Yeah, I mean, I know you do, but I.
Quickly, I mean, especially if we're in a shortage, it makes really good sense for him to sell them rather very quickly, within the next year or so.
Exactly.
Since we need five hundred new employees, and we're applied according to all the businesses we have.
Well, and I would say that, that, keep in mind that we need, we need probably at least five hundred new employees, but they're not all going to buy homes, they're not all going to.
And they're not all going to be able to afford two hundred and forty thousand dollar homes either.
Right. But I would also tell you that they can't afford three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, or three hundred thousand dollar homes, which is where they would be without this, this subsidy. So, so that's the concern. I mean, we don't have a shortage of three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes, because there aren't that many selling.
No, we have a shortage of eighty to a hundred and fifty.
We have shady, we have, we have a shortage of eighty to a hundred and fifty, but then, I'm guessing, most people would frown on, on getting the density even more dense in order to be able to build something in that range, which you can't do. I mean, as you well know, you're not going to build a new house for that. So we've got to figure out how we can build new housing for that slice in the middle. And then we also need to focus on how we can get people that are in our older, larger homes, that are wanting to downsize to move into this housing in this area, particularly retirees, people that don't need the big space, move out of a larger three or four-bedroom home, and sell those homes for a hundred and fifty thousand, and that's where our workforce gets there. It's not a static thing, we're not really looking for the new workers to come in and just buy these houses. If we can get people that are in other houses to move into these houses and sell their house, that's how we're going to get more available for workforce. It all has to work together. So unless you have any other questions, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's begin. Mr. Baker, this submission that I have on my redevelopment plan has forty-one lots. So that's the plan that should be in front of you, so.
That's the one I got. That's a different picture. You're welcome to take it down if you'd like.
No.
I'm not trying to be facetious.
You got, you got the second one, that's not the one that's before you. So just to make clear, your, your options are, do nothing, it dies, vote against it, it dies, approve it, the CRA will then amend it down to the thirty-seven lots, so.
Let me just add one last thing, and hopefully this is it. The, the builder's also applied for the shot and arm program as a subsidy as well. The shot, the arm requires at least a fourteen-hundred square foot home. So I can tell you that there will, although the approval would be for a less dense, a minimum of twelve-hundred square feet, the incentive, certainly on the early part of this, is to get the shot in the arm incentive, which means fourteen-hundred square foot minimum square footage for those homes in order to qualify for the shot in the arm. So there's an incentive there to build a bigger house, and there'd be some additional, I guess, incentive paid to the developer to get that house, house built, so that we can make it as affordable as possible.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Hold up.
Withdrawn. Don't worry.
Just waiting.
I just want to give everybody else a chance, you know?
I withdraw, I withdrew.
Second.
Was there a second?
Donna Tryon, eight twenty South Me-.
I'll withdraw.
South Bryan, forgot what town it was in. There were just a couple of things I wanted to ask about, or, or talk about. This was in the North Platte Bulletin, a week ago, about the housing needs in town. And talked about the shortage, one was, the shortage is in the lowest income levels. So I don't know if there's going to be enough people, want to sell their homes to move up into these more expensive homes quick enough to take care of the shortage, if that's where the shortage is. Also, it says, seven hundred and forty-eight single homes that are worn out in town. Is there any way that we could TIF redeveloping blighted, substandard properties, other than building new on virgin land? Just, just a thought, you know? It also said there, ongoing was about seventy-seven houses on the market. Well, Telegraph had this listing, that's just one realtor in town, one realtor. Forty-two of these are in North Platte. So is there really a shortage? That's what I'd like to know. I bought and sold a house this year, didn't list it with anybody, didn't put an ad in the paper, I did it on my own. So it wasn't counted in this survey. So how many people do that in town? Population of North Platte has been decreasing since twenty eleven, and I don't really see a lot that's going to be holding a lot of people here. And I think, I think those are just some things we need to think about. I don't know if we need a forty-one or a thirty-seven new houses in this town, when we've got all these other things that could be addressed, to take care of our housing needs. I know I've probably forgotten something, but I don't know, I probably just better quit while I'm ahead. Thanks.
Thank you.
Terry Sigler, thirty-four twenty West F F Dixie. Guess my concern is still the traffic. I was hoping that someone would address that, or do a study, because we've talked about Dixie and A Street, Phillip and Buffalo, A and Buffalo, E and Buffalo, and now we can add Dixie and Phillip. With all the traffic coming out in Dixie, it's going to be a mess trying to, you know, to be safe to get out on Phillip Street. Phillip's a busy street, so is Phillip and Buffalo. The concern is, of all the traffic coming out of that new development, will be coming out on Dixie instead of on Phillip. Just with the guys working and building those three brand-new houses down there, plus the houses already there, we're going around now, because it's a mess down there. What are we going to do when there's a lot of traffic, or a lot of cars parked on both sides? So I would hope that the city would have a study to see what the impact is going to be, and, and get things in place now before the development is started or even finished. Are we going to wait till it's all done and then decide? I said, you know, people that live up there know that it's a real mess getting across Phillip and Buffalo. And there's a lot more traffic coming down A, A to Buffalo for that reason, and we're, and we're one of them. So I would hope that the city council or the planners would start up, getting a plan together now. So, thank you.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second. Second.
Oh, wait a minute.
Withdrawn. Second, who, second, withdrawn, yeah?
Tom Pfeifer, eight thirteen Dixie. Have basically the same concerns that Terry has. We were told that they didn't want the traffic exiting, entering and exiting off of Phillip Street. So they dump it into Dixie, and then they're going to go down to Phillip and make that same left-hand turn. Only instead of two streets making a left-hand turn, now there'll be one street, Dixie, that they'll be making the left-hand turn on to Phillip on. So it doesn't work either way. My second concern was, I, I agree with our, our Senator Mike Grony. This property never should have been TIFed. This property never should have been blighted and substandard as a listing for this property. The, the requirements are pretty vague. You've got a gray area, just take a little bit out of there, maybe there's a tree stump or something somebody doesn't like. I know there's city water there, because I tapped into it across the street to build my house. Mr. Wilkinson beside me, last month, tapped into it across the street in that eight-acre site. There's water there. There's electrical boxes there, behind Edna Court, halfway between Dixie and the alley. There's infrastructure there. But yet, you want to give him one point seven million dollars, plus twelve thousand for the first twenty-seven homes he builds? That's a pretty good incentive. I don't think North Platte needs more businesses, is what we need is industry. If we got some industry in North Platte, the contractors would flock here, they'd be building houses. But we don't, is all we have, we, we promote mom-and-pop operations, and then maybe their kids will work for them. We need industry. We don't need businesses.
Thank you.
I was getting tired of sitting down, so. Clarion Eikoff, eight nine zero nine, South Buffalo. And I am the chair of the Economic Development Committee for Chamber DevCo currently, and we need business. I sat three years ago in the Chamber boardroom in a meeting with the State Department of Economic Development, and they went through a half-hour presentation and shared with us stats that the state growth came from eighty-five percent existing business. And that was my wow factor, of like, wow, the state is growing and creating increase in sales tax and revenue for our state. And it came from eighty-five percent of existing business within our state. If North Platte could grow like that from the existing business that is already here, like, for instance, my husband's company, who happens to be a builder and has built houses in this community for fifteen years, if we could have that growth with our company, with our subs, our plumbers, our electricians, our lumberyards, I mean, that's business, that's growth. And yes, we are trying to capitalize on increasing industry. That's a competitive. You guys want to talk TIF, and you guys want to talk incentives out the wazoo? Let's talk industry incentives, let's talk TIF with industry. I mean, we all know what it took to get Walmart DC here, and Walmart DC is just as much vocal in making this housing project work as any employer. So we just sent Gary Pearson, who luckily actually had his ticket paid for, to go to California to talk industry. So, you know, we are not just focused on housing, we're focused on the entire enchilada. Housing, quality of life, and industry. Growing existing business, which you guys partnered with us to help us with the workforce incentives, which are continuing to come in with. incentives, which are continuing to come in with applications and local employers who are relocating people here to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Clarion.
My name's Mel McNay, thirty-four oh two West F Street. Kind of wearing three different hats here. One, as the second-largest employer in North Platte. Two, this is my neighborhood we're talking about. And three, just from a health perspective, and I want to share, I'm in favor of the homes being built. These are about fourteen hundred square feet homes. I was just at my son's home this weekend in Carney. Beautiful home, great bedrooms, great setup, family of two, they love their home. It's fairly new. They don't have high-paying jobs. They have been able to afford this housing. I'm for this because I also think the street Dixie needs to be looked at. Our three children walk down that street every single day to Eisenhower, and that street is really narrow. So I think part of the plan has to be that we look at what Dixie looks like now to make it safer for the children that are walking to Eisenhower. As a major employer, today I sat down with a couple in our cafeteria. One is a PA and one is an RN. Do you know where they live? Gothenburg. Do you know why they chose Gothenburg? Because there was no housing or variety of housing for them to pick from here. I've also talked to some of our staff in IT that we've recruited. They're living in rentals right now. They'd really like to move to a better home. We have an obligation, just not for the city of North Platte, but for the whole region to supply healthcare. We have three issues facing us in our community. Mortality high due to diabetic mortality. We are high in suicide, and we're high in hypertension. The hospital and the organization has gone out of its way to try to address all three issues. One, we've recruited an adolescent psychiatrist, the first in this area completely. We've recruited another general psychiatrist that will come mid-year. We hired a case manager that will be here towards the end of the year. We'll embed her in our pediatric clinic so that we can help meet the behavioral issues that young people are experiencing. We need the homes. We need the commitment from the city to continue growing. We're a growing organization. We don't need any incentive, economic incentive, but I can add jobs and I can bring specialists here. I can take care of, help take care of the citizenry of our community, but I can't do it unless I have homes. It's the major obstacle that we face. I think the housing shortage, and I'd like to compliment my community too, because a lot of the feedback, and I think the developer really listened to it, and I see a compromise here. And that's what a democracy is all about, is compromise. And I really appreciate the developer willing to make changes. But as a community, if we're going to grow and if you want to see healthcare services in our community and want to see them expand, because we're all going to need them someday. Everyone in this room has to have the people there to take care of them. I would really appreciate your support for us. We're an important part of the community. We've given over six hundred thousand dollars this year back to the community and probably more than that. That is in cash donations for housing, growth of our community college. We've helped establish an RN program, a baccalaureate program with the help of the University of Nebraska Med Center. We've actually recruited fifty RNs into our community. All of them are in the process of coming. They're good salaries. They're going to be looking at homes like this. We're looking for innovative ways, not to just give them bonuses to stay here, but how do we keep them here and get them invested in our community? And we're looking at those different options. So I appreciate the community. I appreciate what you do for Great Plains Health, but we need housing, and I would really appreciate the council giving a positive vote on that.
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte, Chamber Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey's. Address for our corporation, I also live in the city limits of the city of North Platte. I don't want to belabor the housing point. I think it's been throughout the public process very well. There's been a real educational process very well done. I want to compliment the media on the great job they've done informing the public of the need of housing. I think that issue's been thoroughly discussed. I really appreciate the explanation on why incentives are needed and the use of TIF to do housing. For the record, the North Platte Chamber Development Corporation is not the developer on this project, but we are very, very supportive of housing projects. In the three years I've been in North Platte, I can tell you the consistent message I've heard from everybody and all employers is housing and workers, workers and housing. And we can't move the needle on North Platte and get the community and the economy where we want it without addressing the housing issue. It's a very serious issue. I've had the opportunity to sit down with our major employers, our mid-major employers and our small employers, and consistently hear that. I would challenge that the number of open jobs are not five hundred, it's probably double that, if not more. And that's been those conversations I've had with those employers. That's the best way that we can grow our community, just like Clarion said. All the studies will show that's the best growth you could have because it's immediate growth. It's the immediate need. And we don't want those, we want those jobs remaining in North Platte and not leaving here. The community has a wonderful opportunity. I really think that we're at a crossroads right now. Decisions that will come forward tonight really do send a message to a lot of other things that are contemplating being in North Platte. When you look at our peer communities and you have conversations, you look at their building permits and you study what they've done the last twenty years, what they've done the last ten years, what they've done the last couple of years, and the number of houses they're building is significantly more than what North Platte is building. And they're using every creative tool that they can. We were working with one development group that was looking at doing an apartment complex in North Platte. They decided to go to Norfolk, and the community fully embraced them doing a hundred and thirty-unit project up there. We're in competition with everybody else out there for the same workforce, the same developers, the same business and industry. And the easier we can make them to say, to have the answer be, yes, we want to be in North Platte, we have to prove to them as a community that we are doing the right things to move the community forward. I commend you for being public officials. It's a tough day and age to be one. And the fact that you serve in your community speaks very highly of your character and your dedication to your town, and I thank you for it.
My name is Ron Hanson, super-tenant, North Platte Public Schools, three oh one West F Street, and I'm here for the supporting of any of the housing developments, projects we have going for a couple of main reasons. Annually, we hire thirty-plus teachers, administrators, support staff, and they need places to live. And we recruit across the United States. Our recent hire came from Texas, and just before that was South Sioux City, Nebraska, by the border. So we bring them from out of town also, but they need homes. And the second main reason, there's questions that had surfaced about our enrollment capacity. One area was Eisenhower, but we had the room to grow seventy-five-plus students at Eisenhower in the current boundaries. And the Board of Education is looking at redoing our boundary somewhere along the line because things change, and we want to keep our capacity enrollment at all our schools. But overall, we can take on a thousand more students. So the more students, the more state aid that brings to our community because we are an equalized district. So that's important for us to know also that along with students comes state aid money. So we're all for having more families and children join the public school. So thank you for taking this, giving us the opportunity to share with you.
Wes Andreahan, thirty-six oh two Edna Court. I agree, or I'm not going to argue about the fact that we need new housing or this type of housing. I just don't think it's in the right area. You've got all the neighbors around there saying, please don't do this here. It doesn't fit this area. We have problems with Dixie Avenue, and that's going to be a problem. So I'm not against the housing, it's just the location. Thank you.
I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I decided I probably better say a couple of things. Judy Clark, Supervisor of the Development Department. Just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about the Planning Commission, City of North Platte Planning Commission. These items have went to the Planning Commission, a couple of different meetings. And, you know, for those of you that don't know, I teach a government class out at Mid-Plains Community College as an adjunct faculty member. And so I see the government statewide, federal-wide, even local, where everybody's split, one side or the other. You're split one side or the other. Planning Commission did an excellent, excellent job because what they did was they took this situation where part of the public wants forty-one houses and they want these little lots and they want huge, huge, huge development. And the other part of the community is like, no, wait, we don't want anything there. We want nothing there. We want nothing. And so what they did was they took and compromised. I haven't seen government compromise in a long time. You don't see it on the local level. You don't see it on the federal level. You don't see it on the state level. It was a compromise, and they did a beautiful job. They went in, you're still getting housing, you're getting a little bit larger lots in a neighborhood, and when they're saying that this doesn't fit, it fits. Houses around it are valued, the assessed values are valued anywhere from three hundred thousand dollars all the way down to a hundred and fourteen thousand, all the way around that property. It fits. It's a residentially zoned property. You have to develop if you want your community to grow. Doesn't matter if it's housing development, if it's commercial development, if it's industrial development, you have to start somewhere. The Planning Commission did an awesome job. They've given you guys a recommendation, or CRA, I guess, a recommendation that says compromise. Let's compromise. The other thing that Planning Commission did, for those of you that didn't attend, was at the end of their proposal to do this compromise, they also set forth a motion to look at Dixie Avenue. They are drafting a letter. I believe Ty Lucas was assigned the task of drafting the letter to ensure that we get this, or at least get it talked about, to possibly be putting it on the one and six-year plan. They're going to talk with the city engineer, and we're going to get that ball in motion. Planning Commission did an awesome job, and they gave you something really good. And nobody ever likes to see development in their backyard. I've been in planning for eighteen years now. Across the state, it's the same thing. Nobody likes to see development in their backyard. You guys have tough choices to make, but I think you've got an excellent compromise in front of you. Yes, sir?
I agree with much of what you've said, Judy. I know our Planning Commission works hard and they really try to do the right thing. I don't disagree with much of what you said. One thing I did pick up on is that you said that half the people don't want anything out there. I've not heard any of these people that have spoken say that they didn't want development out there. It's the type of dense development that they don't want. Is there anyone out? I mean, I haven't heard anybody say they didn't want that to develop out there. So I think you missed the boat on that little point. That's the only point I have.
I can't let this go. Tom Pfeifer, eight thirteen Dixie Avenue. Thanks, Jim. We do want development. Everyone out here wants development. I'd like to have neighbors, they come over and have a beer, whatever. I don't have any. We want development. And everybody says, we need this housing. We need this. Had any of you been shown a floor plan or an elevation plan or anything of what they intend on building out here? If you're going to start building November the first, like the figure was put out when this originally started, you already have your plans. You're going to start ordering material. What are we getting? They just say, yeah, we need these houses. And these houses have now gone from fourteen to fifteen, sixteen to two thousand, twelve We have a stake out there. None of you guys do. None of you do. We're the ones that's worried about this. We want a development. We just want to know what type of development. We don't get any information. It's like, I've got a secret. Try to guess. No one puts out anything, whether they've got it or not. So have any of you seen an elevation or a floor plan? Do you know what you voted for by lowering this from R1 to R2?
Hi. Pete Volz, four zero two one, Sequoia Drive. I am the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I appreciate what Judy said under Judy's tutelage. We did a really nice job on that, and I do feel that we brought and came together with as good of a compromise as you could for this acreage. I do want to give you a little bit of history of this acreage, okay? This came before the Planning Commission approximately a year ago, I'm not sure, to zone it to an R3 from an R1. And the community was vigorously opposed to that, as was the Planning Commission. Prior to that, though, when it was zoned in R1, this property was looked at to be a Crown development, which is a buy here, pay here, excuse me, rent to own, similar vernacular, rent-to-own housing. So it was single-family housing that fit in an R1 zone, but it would have been people that moved in without an investment into the property, okay? They could have gotten into the house for as little as three hundred dollars. That would have been approved if it wasn't for the failure of a USDA grant. So when we say we don't know what we're getting here, we do know what we're getting. This is an R2 property, an R2-zoned property, and there are certain setbacks, front yard, side yard setbacks, that can only go into these properties. The only thing the Planning Commission did when we rezoned it from an R1 to an R2 is reduce the minimum square footage of a lot from nine thousand feet to below nine thousand feet. But you can still only put a single-family or duplex on there, but then if you put a duplex on that property, that lot has to be bigger, so it has to come in front of the Planning Commission. There's a lot of failsafes in this plan so that you do know what you're getting. So look down through the plan, the zoning regulations, and you know what you're getting on this property, okay? So with that, be careful what you wish for. A lot of places and a lot of people have looked at this property, and this is the only time that it has come to fruition possibly, depending on your vote, as to be able to develop this. I personally know friends that have looked at this, and they couldn't make a cash flow. This is the first time we've had real, real progress on this piece of property, this vacant ground in the middle of North Platte that is very desirable in the southwest portion of town. So think about your vote, think hard about it. Like Mr. Pearson said, Gary said, a lot of people are watching this vote to see what you guys do as for future development in this community. So please think hard, please think safe, and I do think we know what we're getting here. So thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, my name's Kim Zercher, seven oh eight Dixie. I can't add anymore, my neighbor's Tom. Terry Bell already said, but I will tell you one thing. Me and my wife bought a property there at the end of Dixie nineteen years ago. The street wasn't open at that time. Me and Bernie were pretty good buddies. If you come down our street, you was either snooping or lost. Because if you wasn't looking for me, Bernie, or Emma, that's what it was. But I knew no Bernie, one thought. I tried to buy a piece from him, and he said, no, he wanted to sell it all. And then after the church bought it, he said he didn't think the church realized how much their half of the cement was going to cost, and that's what got him in a bind. But I do know Bernie, bless your heart, bud, wanted a church there. But I do know Bernie, bless your heart, bud, wanted a church there, not a conglomeration of homes. And I tell you what, I hope you people think about this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon Kelleher, 3801 Sugarberry Court. As the crow flies, I live about a half mile from where this chunk of property is and I drive by it at least twice a day, depending on whether I have to go home to let the dog out for lunch. I guess jokes are not allowed, City Council, I'm sorry. Maybe I'll do good jokes. Anyway, my being, I don't think anyone can openly debate whether we need housing in North Platt, but I think that those of you that are voting tonight have a real chicken and egg discussion. So, I would just leave you this one thought. You know what doing nothing is going to do because that's almost what we've done for the last 20 years. So, have a little faith and try something different. Thank you.
My name is Ivan Mitchell, 9466 South Coyote Lane. I, you know, represent a few different areas. I'm in the North Platt Public School District. I work, I work for the hospital and also serve on DevCo's Economic Development Committee. And, you know, we've talked about the housing shortage. The stat that, that keeps coming out to me is 3.3% effective vacancy rate. That's for selling rental homes when a healthy market is 5 to 7%. Anyone who knows someone that's tried to move here in the last few years, it's, you know, you talk to them and it's, it's, it's a struggle. I moved here about three years ago. Love the community, but it was a, it was a hard relocation and I moved to North Dakota in the middle of the first oil boom, so that tells you something. You know, I, I guess I'd just like to appeal to, to two points. One, the financial, and then the other, just kind of the practical and pragmatic approach that, that's up to you as a, as an elected official. You know, when, you know, we, we debate the need for, for housing or not, and typically I'll hear someone say that, you know, I have one friend that's had a hard time selling a home. And so, I think you need to kind of look at, when you look at some of the, some of the initiatives that have been passed, you know, here recently, you know, you need to look at something that's a little more manageable than, than, you know, one home that is maybe less desirable or over-market value priced. You know, and I look at that shot-in-the-arm program, shot-in-the-arm phase one, that we're actually adding, you know, currently in, in phase two for development. And I was looking at the stats that, that Gary shared with me and I thought it was very interesting. You had 48 new homes and basically when they had this, I remember hearing everyone saying, what a joke, why are we doing this? Why are we incentivizing housing development? No one's gonna buy them. We don't have a housing need. You all heard that, right? And, you know, those, all those homes sold, they sold quickly. There were a couple of townhomes that took a little bit longer to sell. But, you know, even in those townhomes now, we have, we have two physicians that live in the townhome, one that rents and one that, one that purchased a home. We have, at the hospital, we have $6 million in what we call travelers or locum expense that we pay every year. That's fairly high. And as we meet, we do a focus group with, 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 with groups of our employees and we typically talk about, you know, what do we need to focus on in the community? And the number one, the top issue is always housing. It's been in every single group. We typically have three issues. You know, housing's always number one. You, you take a look at recreation being number two, recreation and entertainment, number three being, being retail. And so, those are the three things we're focused on. That's why we're so passionate about, about housing and about growing this. But just for a second, financially, if you look at shot-in-the-arm phase one, you know, one of the, there, there were some lots in town and we felt that those could be a quick development, but, and so, that's kind of why they went through with this, with the subsidy. And you, the original investment from the city was 172,000 and those 48 new homes are now generating 240,000 in new property tax annually. So, you had a one-year, a return on investment of 39% and just from a, a real basic business perspective, you have a three-year cash-on-cash return just from the property tax of 418%, which is insane. That's like someone that, you know, was an early investor in Amazon or Google. You know, you don't see those numbers anywhere else. So, people who want to debate whether there's that need or not, why would 48 of these sold as fast as they have? And if you look financially, it's been a, a great return and a big boom back to the, to the coffers of the city. And that's just looking at property tax. If you look at sales tax, they're estimating anywhere from 125 to 150,000 annually on top of the property tax savings. So, that's very, very significant. And that's, you know, from the, so, you know, financially, we're in a position now where we've been talking about needing a larger development, where we can get some economies of scale, where you can pour, you know, multiple foundations at one time because that decreases your cost. Your incremental cost decreases the more that you, that you, that you build and put up at a time so that we can get that cost down and improve that pricing. You know, the, the last thing I would say is that the data out there suggests that you need to build 1% of the houses that you currently have out there just to maintain the current, the, the current standard of your city because you're gonna have things that phase out that are no longer livable. We've been drastically below that, I believe, Gary. And, you know, the, the, the one year where we saw, or the two years where we saw the amount of building that we had double was during that shot-in-the-arm phase one. So, you know, I think most of you get into government, you know, I, I'm on the North Platt School Board. I, I hope the school improves and I want to make it better. I assume that those of you that are on the City Council have that same opinion and you want to make the city better. The reality is, is if we don't, the data out there, if we, if we aren't at least building 1% of our current inventory, the reality is, is that, that our homes are, and our communities declining. No matter how you look at it, you're gonna have to build at least 1% of your homes and we haven't really even come close to that in the last couple of years. You know, from a pragmatic approach, you know, I, I work in healthcare and it's, it's in politics all the time. I know a lot of people and, and I kind of share some similar, you know, opinions that will, that will have these discussions about how they think government should be totally out of healthcare, shouldn't have anything to do with it. You know, Medicare, Medicaid, they just want them completely out of it. But what's really interesting is when these guys all turn 65, 66, I don't know anyone that goes out and does not take Medicare. I don't know anyone that goes out and buys a private policy from Blue Cross and pays $7,000 a month and we would all think they're nutty to do that. So, at some point, you have to look at, here's, here's, here's how things are set up right now. This is the law. We have communities around us utilizing TIF. I think Hastings is at 600% a higher rate than we are. I think you see the same thing with Norfolk and Columbus. And guess what? Those communities have grown and ours haven't. And so, at some point, you have to say, okay, whether you, whether you like TIF or whether you don't like TIF, that's the law right now, right? That's what we're doing. And, and you'd have to go to the state level or probably even the national level to change that. If you just change it at the state level, you make your state less competitive on, on an economic basis. So, you basically have to look at, this is the law and this is how things are getting built throughout our communities. And so, you know, we can fight it, but that's kind of like the person, you know, not taking Medicare when they're 65 and people don't do that because it's not smart, right? So, at some point, we have to say, hey, does this make sense? This is the law currently right now. Does it make sense or does it not? Whether you disagree with it or not, it's kind of irrelevant in the position that you're in at this point because you have to decide what's best for the city and how's the city gonna grow. Because if we don't do it, others are gonna do it and they've done it and that's why they've grown and that's why we've declined. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Fallhaber. I'm Chairman of the Chamber and I live at 265 North Maloney Drive. I'm a local realtor in town. We currently have 83 houses for sale in North Platt, Nebraska. 60 days ago, we had about 110. We're down to 83 now. I toured two developers from Colorado last, probably 90 days, 120 days ago. Both developers were looking to come here. They knew we had a housing shortage. They thought maybe they could come to North Platt and build a lot of houses. Like, you know, they wanted to buy, both of them wanted to buy a minimum of 20 lots. So, I toured them around North Platt. There is no place in North Platt where they could buy 20 lots at one shot. They wanted them all in the same place. They don't want to spread them out. They wanted them all in one, some, the same place so they could, you know, build their houses. I mentioned to them about maybe buying the ground and developing, developing it. That was not something they were interested in doing. They wanted to come in and buy the lots already developed. Both of them left, chose not to come here. They have both heard about what is going on right now and are waiting to see what happens. So, it's in your court.
Thank you.
Donna Tryon, 820 Bryan. I just wanted to say, if you Google "TIF," it started in 1952 in California. That should tell you everything you need to know. We're in this mess because of all the government involvement. I moved two states, three states away from here, rented a place for five months, looked around, found a lot, decided who I went for a contractor. I built my own house. I'm free enterprise. It worked. So, I think it would work here too if we could just kind of back away from all this government involvement. Thanks.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Move that we adopt the resolution approving the City of North Platt redevelopment plan for the Dixie Development Housing Project, approving the redevelopment project and approving related actions.
Second.
Motion passes seven to one. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your comments and we still have one more item to go if you'd like to hang out for a bit. We have item number 14, claims.
Move that we pay the claims.
Second.
And that motion passes as well.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. No move.